Today is Monday, December 5th, 2022. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson? Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
And Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you so much. At this time, we have our first call to the public. We do have a speaking request from Ms. Kathy Adams.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name's Kathy Adams, 240 Struggles, and I would like to give my best wishes and thank yous to Councilmember Hughes and Councilmember Anderson. They have served us in the very best way. I will tell you that I think on some very important issues, we probably disagree, I know we disagree, but that doesn't matter, right? The point is, we have different issues, but we are all trying to do the best for our town. And I really appreciate their patience and their listening and respect for the public. I always felt that there was an open door, no matter what the gripe was, that we could go and talk to you. I also want to say, especially for Judy, I think just being the wife of an officer, let alone the chief of police, you've already done your duty, but in addition to that, I know you through your years on the chamber, and as I remember it, it's when we became the Greater Chamber and we added the most number of businesses. I mean, it was a very vibrant, positive time. And I knew you from having a store on Main Street. One of your pictures is hanging in my living room. And I just feel like you are just in every single way part of the community, and I thank you. And Mr. Anderson, you're gonna miss all my calls, I know. I'll still talk to you as a friend. I think John has just dug into, now that I'm on planning and zoning, just awful material, but he's always done his best to understand what the rules say, right? And get out from under the opinions and the agita and just say, this is the way, it's written, this is the law, let's try to do the best we can. And again, I know he and I don't agree on everything, but we have those discussions and we part friends. I just want to thank both of you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? I only have the one speaking request. All right, seeing no such movement, we'll go ahead and close call to the public. We do have some unfinished business here. Item 6A is discussion, approval, disapproval of October 3rd, November 28th, and 29th Town Council Meeting Minutes. Does any member of council have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the October 3rd, November 28th, and 29th, 2022 Town Council Minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. All right, Mr. Corey Pine, come on up. We're celebrating some 20 years of service here this evening. Corey Pine is with our fire department. Mr. Pine started with the Town of Florence on October 24th, 2001, as a part-time firefighter and became a full-time member of the fire department on October 25th, 2002. Corey Pine was promoted to fire engineer on October 2nd, 2004, worked as a fire engineer until June 24th, 2006, when he was promoted to the rank of fire captain. Working in this capacity until February 16th, 2022, where Corey stepped up to act as an interim battalion chief. Throughout his career, Corey has been self-motivated, stepping up by developing goals to move the projects and the department forward in areas such as wellness, mental health wellness, driver credentialing, by providing tutoring and studying groups for promotion testing, use of real-world training tools, development of crew procedures, and identifies areas that need improvement. Over the past few years, Corey has developed a passion for assisting those with mental health issues. He has worked tirelessly and in his spare time to research and develop a peer support team for the Florence Fire Department. He has attended various trainings, including being a certified peer support team member. He attended the first CST training held by Arizona State Fire School and has been focusing on post-traumatic stress and first responders. Through this training, he has been able to develop a working relationship with other agencies such as PCSO, the Florence Police, Mesa Fire, and Chandler Fire regarding how their peer support teams are funded and function. All of this effort has collimated in Corey, see, I put my own word in there, did you see what I did? In Corey putting together a peer support program within the Florence Fire Department. This provides our firefighters the ability to speak with a peer who will guide them to additional resources. Corey uses his tenure and experiences in the most appropriate manner in dealing with situations in the community. He attends events representing the Florence Fire Department in a positive way, and Corey is engaged in his area of responsibility, demonstrating the ability to systematically solve any problem that is presented to him with little to no supervision. Corey utilizes the team concept of problem-solving to seek out the answers from coworkers and technical specialists in a mitigation incident. Corey is a proven leader within the Florence Fire Department, and he continues to coach his crew members, who have many shown up in support this evening, while working through internal departmental growth and development process. Over the past 20 years, Corey has grown into an asset to the Florence Fire Department. At this time, I'd also like to invite up our interim fire chief to say a few words and present an award.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I had a whole speech prepared, but since you already listened to it, I want to accentuate a few things and put a little understanding and perspective into spending 20 years in the fire department. When I first came on, Corey was the first person that I remember meeting. He may not have been the first one, but he was the first one that I remember because he brought that aspect of service, service to the department, service to the community, and that's what really helped me latch on. But at the time that Corey came in, the department was very small. We had a mix between part-time and full-time. So when we look at those dates of when he moved up, you can look and go, well, there wasn't really that many people around. But what the department has turned into today and the professional image that we have in the community is built off of people like Corey, and Corey specifically, stepping into roles and not just doing the role, but taking it to that next level that our department needed to develop into the future. And knowing personally how much he's helped me, and that I want to share, I want to share one story, I don't know if it's funny or applicable, but when Corey was first promoted to captain, it was his first day as a captain, it was also his birthday, if you remember correctly, and he got dispatched to a structure fire right on the first day of being a captain. And the difference in that call at that time with Corey was the new age that he brought to that call, that we had a command structure, we had organization, people had assignments, we used personal accountability on that call, and I say "we," but it was you. And, you know, that's just one of the memories, but that just shows what kind of a person he's been for our department. He's been on the edge of change, he's brought mental health to our department way before it's even been talked about in the community, and that may be one of the single greatest accomplishments along with everything else that you're doing, is the support that we can offer our people when they're going through tough times. So that may not have been exactly what the speech was that I had put together, but I appreciate all you guys being here tonight and on behalf of the department, I want to congratulate you on 20 years.
Our next presentation this evening is for 20 years of service to, where is Bebo? Bebo, can you come on up here, please? He really hustled this past Friday evening for our Hometown Holidays Parade, and he's always hustling for the Town of Florence. All right, Mr. Mendevi started with his career in the Town of Florence on December 2nd, 2002, as a recreation programmer, and in 2017, in the title of Recreation Programmer, which was changed to Recreation Coordinator. Mr. Mendevi will be the first to ask that you call him by his nickname, Bebo. Over his tenure, he has overseen many recreation programs, but has mainly been responsible for the aquatics and adult-youth sports programming. Over the years, Bebo has led the aquatics staff with great success. Bebo has been responsible for the recruitment and hiring of 30 to 40 seasonal employees to run the Aquatics Center annually. He provides development and training as many of the youth are working for the first time. He has been a positive influence in the lives of many youth of this community and has seen them grow into the productive young adults they are today. Bebo has expanded the aquatics program to include lap swimming, swim lessons, water aerobics, family nights, and teen nights. He has been responsible for the aquatics budget and, remaining within the budget yearly, Bebo has received CPRP, CPO, WSI, and AFO training, which demonstrates his dedication to his career and ensuring that the town is offering trending programming to the community. Bebo has attended the Aquatics Symposium annually and APRA, Aquatic Drowning Awareness Seminars, to ensure he is sharing with his staff the most current safety compliance methods. Bebo is a team player and leads by example. He's always willing to do what he can to help the team, whether it's covering a shift, assisting with tasks or events, or volunteering to DJ an event. Bebo has overseen the youth and adult sports programs for 17 years, and in this time, he has expanded the offerings through the development of relationships with local sport organizations. Over the years, Bebo has been a driving force within the recreation team. He's always positive in his mood, and he maintains a positive vision for the Florence Recreation Department. At this time, I would like to call up Ms. Allison Fleese to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just want to reiterate, Bebo has been a great asset to the Town of Florence. He's helped develop many youth programs and special events that we have available for our community year after year. All of Bebo's, of all of Bebo's accomplishments with the Town of Florence, I'm most proud of the hard work that Bebo put into the Aquatics Center. Bebo developed trainings, policies, and procedures to run a safe and successful Aquatics Center operation. The Aquatics Center is usually first-time employers for most lifeguards, with the majority of our seasonal staff being high school or college-age students. Working with this age group can be a challenging task, but Bebo did a great job creating trainings and protocols to ensure our young staff were prepared for any emergency. To paint a picture of the culture that we try to create within the Community Services Department, I'd like to share with you one of my favorite things that Bebo would tell his first-time lifeguards. He would tell his staff that with their first paycheck, to make sure they treat their parents to a meal. This just shows that Bebo is a great role model for our community, and he has a heart of gold. I'd also like to congratulate Bebo on a successful Hometown Holiday Light Parade this past Friday. Thank you, Bebo, for your years of service, and I'm very excited for your future.
Applause. Next, I would like to call up Ms. Sherri Jones. Sherri Jones was nominated by multiple members of our organization in different departments. So we have our Employee Service Award that is given out monthly, and it's based upon a peer review, where the members review all of the submissions, they talk about them, and then they select the recipient who will receive the award. So I'd like to share the nomination that was sent in that made you the recipient of not only this award, but also a $75 gift certificate to any business of your choice in the Town of Florence. I wish to nominate Sherri Jones for her hard work and dedication to the Town of Florence. Sherri is the definition of excellence in all she does and provides for the Town of Florence. Sherri always goes above and beyond when completing her tasks, ensuring town staff and public have clean facilities to conduct business. Sherri often comes in on the weekend to complete extra tasks, such as carpet cleaning and floor waxing that cannot be done during the normal work week. Sherri takes pride in making sure staff offices are very clean and that the facility restrooms are clean and sanitized. I have worked beside Sherri and would tell her to slow down, take a break, and her response is, "I've got to get this done." Sherri is a professional who is dedicated, she is a hard worker who is always striving to get the job done, keeping our town facilities in tip-top condition. So the next time that you want to see excellence, come and see Sherri Jones. Thank you, Sherri, for all that you do. I'm going to call forward Judge Valdez. He is our local magistrate here in the Town of Florence, and he is going to conduct the swearing-in of council-elect Michelle Cortez, Nicole Buchalato, and Jose Maldonado, if you could please come forward.
If you would please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Michelle Cortez.
Nicole Buchalato.
Jose Maldonado.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And all ordinance of the Town of Florence.
And all ordinance of the Town of Florence.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the Florence Town Council.
Of the Florence Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we'll have our roll call. Councilmember Maldonado?
Present.
Councilmember Buchalato?
Present.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. Next, we have a presentation. All right, John Anderson and Judy Hughes, come on up. As 2022 comes to an end, so does the tenure of two amazing individuals who have served our citizens and community with distinction. I would like to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation to Councilmember John Anderson and Councilmember Judy Hughes. As I've grown to know and serve this team with each of you, it's clear that you both love this town, that you take your roles seriously, that you have sacrificed much to serve this community, and that you do what you believe is right to serve our residents, and that you have your votes and actions made by the town which have made a better place to live, work, and play. At any given Town Council meeting, council members make decisions that will impact generations on topics ranging from police and fire protection, budget, taxes, economic development, transportation, parking, road maintenance, parks, land use, utility rates, vendor contracts, and this is only to name a few. To do this effectively, a member of council must be committed to attend council meetings, public hearings, community meetings, liaison meetings, and public events. Council members must also suspend Councilmembers must also spend a significant amount of time preparing for meetings. Councilmembers, our packets, you know, range about 250, 500 pages of dense, complicated material. And it takes time and dedication. And both you and you, John and Judy, you have both arisen to that occasion. You clearly demonstrate your commitment to public service, your passion for our community, and your desire to put Florence first and do what's best for our community. Now, this evening, we have some gifts of thanks. And it really ties in a lot of significant contributions that you've made to the town of Florence. As I mentioned in the speech, we all have a part in many various facets of our town. Councilmember Anderson, I am always going to remember your contribution, especially when it came to... Did you already take it out? There's supposed to be a big reveal. The Eagle, the Veterans Memorial. You worked really hard on this. This is something that you led. This was a vision that you had and you worked collaboratively with our community and various stakeholders to make this a reality. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, there was a lot of contributions to this. You know, the American Legion, the vets in town. My son designed all this, free to the town, I might say. But it was a, it was a joy to do this. It's been a joy to be a council member. Because, you know, I've told several people that over the years, I've got to meet a lot of nice people in Florence. And I just don't know of any bad experiences that I've had. And it's just been great serving the town. I just wish that I could do it longer, but my age is creeping up on me. And I think it's time for me to take a rest on it. But thank you so much.
I'm going to set it so you don't have to hold it because we're going to be up here for a little bit.
Okay.
Judy. Judy has also given much in the way of all of the aforementioned facets. One of her driving passions that she really brought forward was the Whitlow Rodeo Grounds. And she very much worked collaboratively with our council, with key figures in our community, and made a lot of much-needed improvements in the area of the rodeo grounds. And we're seeing much life brought forward because of that. So with that, we would like to present you with the 90th Junior Prada painting. I'd also like to invite all of our members to come down from council. And we have two more very significant pieces to present you with this evening. I wonder if they're going to hang this on their doors at home? Councilmember, to your office?
I do what I want, if you haven't noticed.
Councilmember Anderson? I have a thank you certificate and your placard. Councilmember Hughes? A thank you certificate and your placard. And before we get to the next parts, would you like to say a few words? Okay, so this is a new tradition that we have in the town of Florence. Because anybody who gives the amount of time, energy, and dedication that it takes to serve our community deserves to have a key to the community, wouldn't you agree? With that, I would like to present you with keys six and seven to the town of Florence. Let's give them a round of applause. We also want to give everybody a few moments to say a few words. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just want to thank both of you for your time and dedication on council and for everything that you guys have contributed to the team. And it really is a team effort. Everything that you guys have brought forward has been with the best interests of the town and wanting to do the best for everybody. So I really appreciate all of your time and commitment to the town as well, so.
She's making me cry.
I am going to miss Judy's tornado phone calls. So if you haven't been at the end of one of those, you are missing a lot because she talks like a mile a minute and she doesn't let you say anything. And so usually I have to say, "Judy." I can only answer one question at a time and you asked me 15 in 10 seconds. So can we back up and let me get to the first question? If you ever need research done, Judy is your researcher. And she does a very good job at it. And she has helped me on many times when I needed to know some information and just didn't have the time to find it out. So I love you, my friend. John? You are the dad I wished I had.
John and Judy, it's been a pleasure and an honor working with you guys. The town is, will never be the same because of what you guys have done. And I am glad to be part of your team. Thank you.
I'm going to try not to cry. Honestly, I learned so much from y'all. I'd really love to thank y'all. Came on this council thinking, "They ain't from Florence, they don't love this place." But y'all definitely proved me wrong. And y'all love Florence just as much as me or anybody else that was born in that hospital in Adamsville. And I'm always remember that and thank y'all for the knowledge that y'all gave me. Thank you so much.
Let's give them a standing round of applause. All right, item 10. We have as new business. Item 10 is discussion, approval, disapproval of appointing a member of council to serve as vice mayor. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, at this time, the floor should be open to nominations. Any member may nominate another member. The second is required, and that is the acceptance of the person that they are willing to take the nomination. After which, you'll close nominations. And the first party to receive four votes will be considered the new vice mayor.
All right. At this time, we are going to go ahead and open nominations.
I would like to start off with nominating Johnny Mendoza for vice mayor.
Do you accept?
I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Roll call? Okay, roll call vote.
Mayor, did you want to ask if there's any other nominations?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I, it's been, it's been two years since we've done this, ladies and gentlemen. So I apologize. Are there any other nominations? I figured they would have just come forward.
I nominate Michelle Cordes.
Do you accept?
Uh, yeah, I accept.
Okay. Ms. Garcia?
Do you have any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Now, we can proceed to vote with Councilmember Mendoza. And then, the first one that receives four votes will be our vice mayor.
Do we need to have a roll call or just all in favor?
The attorney says, "At your pleasure."
Okay. All in favor? For Johnny Mendoza? Vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We did cast votes for Councilmember Neal, Mayor Walter, Councilmember Rodriguez, and Councilmember Mendoza. That would be four.
Okay.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor Mendoza. And Vice Mayor Cordes? Thank you for your services, Vice Mayor. Our next order of business this evening is discussion on council liaison agreements, or appointments, so sorry. Ms. Garcia?
So, the RCA that you have before you lists a long, detailed list of assignments. It also lets you know what date that they meet, as well as the location of the meeting. If they are Pinal County, if they are located during work, if their meetings are held during working hours. We'd like you to look at that list, determine what would best suit you, and get an email to the mayor. The mayor will be contacting you regarding your requests. And at a future meeting date, they will be assigned. Until that time, we ask for you to continue going to your liaison assignments. And we ask that all councilmembers cover Councilmember John Anderson's assignment and Councilmember Judy Hughes' assignment. So we'll be getting out that notice to you. Until then, we look forward to you submitting your requests to service liaisons.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. At this time, we'll have our second call to the public. If you're in person and would like to speak, please raise your hand. Or if you're virtual, please raise your hand. Seeing no such movement, we're closing our second call to the public. And we have a call to the council for current events only. Vice Mayor Mendoza?
First of all, I'd like to thank Judy and John once again for your service to this town. You've taught me a lot. Your passion for this town is infectious. And I thank you for what you guys have done. I thank you for the nomination as vice mayor. And I will do my best to fill Michelle's shoes that did an excellent job as her vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
First of all, I'd like to thank God. Because without him, I wouldn't be here. I'd like to thank my family. I'd like to thank my district commanders and my, sorry, area commander and state commander from the American Legion for coming down. I appreciate it, it means a lot. I have big shoes to fill, like I just told John and Judy. And I hope I can fill those shoes. And I, I hope I do right by, by, by what you guys have done and continue that legacy. And when it comes to the Vet Park, like I told you, John, that, that's a legacy that, that's something that everybody will remember way past when you're gone and when I'm gone. And I really appreciate you coming to me and, and the American Legion and making that, making that possible. Thank you so much for that. All I want to say is I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. And if anybody has nowhere to go during the holidays, just come down to the American Legion. And we're all family there, so, thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just want to say thank you again to John and Judy for everything that you guys have done. John, I've really enjoyed your infectious humor throughout the years. Little side quips that you would say and little funny things that would brighten my day. So I'm, I'm really going to miss those things. And just really going to miss having you guys around. So I'm excited also, though, for our newly-elected officials and everybody on council. I know that it's going to be a nice new leaf, that we get to start fresh and listen to everyone's new ideas. And it's always great when we have new growth in the community. So I look forward to all the changes that are to come.
Councilmember Neal?
Just want to say thank you to John and Judy again for all the knowledge. Thank y'all so much. To the new council members, what John told me my first day, "You're not going to make everybody happy." And that is the truth. I just try to be honest and do what my mom and daddy taught me. I've known you for years, I know you know how to do it. Mo, good dude, my book. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Buchalato?
I just also wanted to tell everybody, my family, my friends, the people that I've met on this journey to... on this journey to being seated as a council member, I just wanted to tell everybody thank you so much for your support. I've met so many amazing people in this town, a lot I had never even talked to before that just instantly started supporting me. And I just wanted to tell everybody thank you. It means a lot to me, and I'll never forget you. And to John and Judy, thank you guys so much for everything, just the little conversations we've had, the phone calls, Judy, just spending the time with you when we were going, you know, for council seats. I just want to say thank you and that you guys have done a great job these last eight and four years. So thank you, guys.
Councilmember Cortez?
John and Judy, you both are my two favoriteest people ever, so I appreciate everything that you've done for me for the last four years. And every time I wanted to quit council, you convinced me to stay on council. Because this is not an easy job. And as Snake said, you can't make everybody happy. And the minute you make somebody not happy, they let you know that they're not happy with you. And sometimes, they're not very kind when they do that. So it's a stressful job. Try to be a little... Try to understand that it is a hard job to sit up here and make decisions for the entire town. So kindness goes a long way. To our new two council members, congratulations. I wish you luck. Lots of luck. And to our new vice mayor, I... You and I have had a conversation about you going for vice mayor, and I supported you at that time, and I still 100% support you. And I look forward to seeing what you can do as vice mayor. And I wanted to say our holiday parade was fantastic. There were way more people than I think the year before, and every year, it just gets bigger. And it's one of the things that we are absolutely known for is that we know how to put on a parade and a good show. So to the staff that helped do that, you guys did a fantastic job, and you should be very proud of yourselves because without you guys, we would not have been able to do it. And to the young lady who put the council float together that morning, she did a great job, and we appreciated it. Chief let us hijack his float and hand out his stuffed animals. And so it was a great event, and I know our businesses were all very excited. And I've read their posts on social media and how busy they were and how kind and gracious everyone was that was coming in, even though they had to stand in some long lines to see Santa Claus or to get hot cocoa or whatever it was. The food vendors that came have all said that this was the best event they've attended in Florence in a long time. So it was nice to hear them say that as well. They all did well, and that was good because that makes them want to come back. I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and I look forward... I think we have one more meeting, so I'm not sure. But if not, then I look forward to seeing you all after the new year.
All right, I am a woman of few words who does not like to repeat what has been said. However, I will repeat one item. John and Judy, thank you so much again for your service. I have really enjoyed serving along both of you. You've brought unique perspectives to council. And although we didn't always agree on items, we always respected each other's viewpoints, and we worked together for the greatness of the town. As we know in any organization, especially our organization, it takes a majority to move things forward. So I'm looking forward to working with our council as a whole, and I want to welcome our two new members and say congratulations to Council Vice Mayor Mendoza for his new appointment. With that said, we do have some refreshments in the lobby, and I hope that you'll join us as we congratulate our exiting members and welcome our new members. And at this time, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. We are adjourned.